Greg DeHolsky.
Here.
Jeff Beachy's here, absent from counsel Dean Renfro. To my left, town marshal Steve Fring.
Yeah.
Legal counsel Alex Bowman.
Here.
Our treasurer Kathy Antonelli.
Here.
And town manager Mike Yoder.
Also here.
Hey. Approval of the agenda, has everybody had a chance to review the agenda?
Yeah.
Yes.
Any changes or corrections to the agenda?
Nobody make it longer.
Okay. The agenda will stand as published. What'd you say?
Never mind.
I usually don't.
Yeah, I know.
I know what? Okay, Mike, let's bring it to it.
Okay, well Angela's here tonight and run us through our two topics and guess we're starting with the RFP and where we're at with that. Maybe Alex can update us on our legal dilemmas with the properties.
The draft RFP that you have in front of you, and I apologize for the word draft, I'm just confused because we may saw it. Isn't much different than what we saw before. I did notice today that the county website has updated aerials, so I'm going to drop in the new aerial and actually shows the site completely clear. So I'll update that which will be good. Included, updated and included the other reference image that we talked about the last time I was here. So the two reference images reflect what we looked at and what you guys are going to give me feedback on for what we're looking at. And everything else is pretty much the same. There's still going to be questions, I would think, on the Riverwalk. It would be. We can feel like it's not quite ready to go out until we know some information on Riverwalk. Because for sure any developer who gets to this is going to want to know what timeframe is for that, when that's going, what is it going to look like? How close can they get to the river? Can I access that? But it's totally up to you guys if you want to really sit and see what response it is, then we can always deal with that when it comes in. We do plan on having some crew on site within the next week or so. The United survey that they have was pre-demolition. So we need to get a clean topography and everything to start looking at that. The other reason we want to start looking at that, having reviewed the United report for the Riverwalk is because of the drop off and the fact that this Riverwalk will have to be ADA compliant. Should they show about a twenty-five foot drop from street level to water level? That would be over three hundred foot of sidewalk, just to keep it ADA compliant to get from the street down to the river level. So we want to take a little bit of a look at if we move it up a little bit, save some room, what we have to do. Because in addition to like three hundred and sixty feet of sidewalk, every thirty foot you have to level off, so it can't just go straight. So making that ADA compliant is going to take up probably that entire parcel with ramps and switchbacks and stuff. So we just want to kind of get a grasp on that, so that if the developer asks, we can say, here's the actual cross-sections, here's your topography, here's your boundary. And here are some options of how things might go, because we think the developers are going to want to know what the timing of that and everything is.
So on that Riverwalk, which, where's that going to go to and from?
Well, I was kind of curious too, because we hadn't talked about the Riverwalk. There will be, you know, we're still retaining the property for the pedestrian bridge. I thought we were imagining that everything from the pedestrian bridge level would be the same all the way behind the properties. And then, that are shown in yellow, and then if the Redbird was interested, we extend that through their property to our parking lot. So we would just connect our parking lot to the back of the Redbird, to the back of those properties. And that would be quite a bit above the rip.
If you did that, that would be really tall pilings that you'd have to do to kind of elevate that. Again, that's something that developers are going to want to know, because there's a big difference if they have a building where they have a lower level walkout of the view of the river or a lower level walkout with a view of pilings every ten feet.
Which would be better, to have the Riverwalk up high and allow them to have something down at the river underneath it?
So that's part of why we wanted to get a cross-section, start looking at it. The United report had like a couple of different paths and a couple of different scenarios. One was kind of like floating out in the, the river, right? Kind of okay, probably harder to get a appearance of the other ones. We think it's probably somewhere in between that and being level with the street. We think it's probably partly off the abatement with sheet piling. So you don't have as much of a distance to traverse with the ADA ramps. But it still gets you a little bit closer. For a developer, I would suspect their, the biggest asset, right, is that view and that access to the water. There's, depending on how the Riverwalk goes, you should have a scenario where either A, they went under the Riverwalk and they can still have docks and stuff down to the water. You could have a scenario where maybe they build a platform that joins up with the Riverwalk, there's a bunch of different things. And that's why we think they're going to want to know a little bit about which direction the town's going. There's some time to work through that, but I suspect you'll get a lot of questions on that, and get people to respond to this. And it could be that their interest in the site helps dictate which way you go. They may say, we really want to have this big patio that comes out. Or no, we want to be able to go under it, because we want to go all the way down. It's just really hard to tell until you kind of get things out there.
So I guess I envision the Riverwalk not at street level at all.
I wouldn't suspect it would be. I would suspect it's not at water level, not at street level.
Yeah, it's somewhere.
Somewhere in between.
Somewhere in between, closer to the river.
Yeah.
You wouldn't want it at water level anyway, because you never know, I mean, look how it flooded with water.
Right. I would suspect probably about ten foot above is kind of when I started looking at the cross-section, you're probably going to be about ten foot above. You can still have stairs that go down, but those don't have to be ADA, it's just the Riverwalk part.
That guy's got a bad tire.
Yeah. And I think we were just looking at, I think, the head and the head phase, the first phase might be from the bridge east. Right, like along the properties where you already have.
To our town parking lot.
Yeah, and if the Redbird's open to it, what I was thinking is, if we could do like it starts here, and then it goes over to the bridge, and then it just it, it stops at that point, and then if, maybe in the future, we go all the way over to.
We've got a design that showed how we'd get under the bridge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if we did that, you could actually do your three hundred foot of drop behind the parking lot.
You can do some of that there. I think if you, depend, it depends on how you want them to be able to get across to the other side, right? So again, the United report at one point showed a bridge that want to, a pedestrian only bridge that want to cross. And I think that's what they actually recommended, that you would want to come from this site. And if that's the case, you want to make sure you're getting up to grade at this site. So that's what we're saying, because we need to start kind of thinking through what those scenarios in real world may look like.
So if we did, if we did the Riverwalk from the back of our parking lot down to here, and then at some point we do the Riverwalk, the pedestrian bridge. But we have that, that's basically at street level?
Yeah, what they were showing was pretty close.
Yeah, so that would be at street level. If you did that and you had access, ADA accessibility from the street level to the bridge and across to the park. Would you requ, would it require ADA access from this point to the bridge?
That one I'd have to check on, because it, it says you have to provide equal access. So it, I would want to run that by somebody to see if that, if the parking lot's considered equal access. We can make an argument too, that if you put it into a parking spot at the parking lot, it's better access. So there's, there's a couple of different things that we can look at.
Because I guess what I'm thinking is, if you have access to the Riverwalk from the parking lot that's ADA, you can get down and back. ADA, and then for the pedestrian bridge, you have access from the street level, it's ADA. In other words, no ramp here, but they can still get from the street level to the bridge and across to the park.
Yeah, it's just that if you run a parking lot level, if you start to come down again, you're still there's not as much room over there to do like switchbacks, to have the ramp get down to the height line. Because you have to go thirty foot, then level off, thirty foot, then level off, thirty foot, then level off. And so that's why, again, we want to get a good cross-section, start sketching up a couple of different ideas and looking at those. Because United did a great job at like getting the project started. We want to take it to the next step to figure out what that might look like. And that's something that we do all the time, we've done several like riverfront kind of things. So we've already pulled profiles from other areas we've worked in to kind of look at the best way to kind of do this, lay it out.
Okay.
And so we're going to just kind of run through and exercise, kind of help figure out whether that comes from the parking lot. We can figure out what's the easiest and cheapest route. It's just that when we looked at that twenty-five foot drop, our head instantly goes to like those eighty percent calculations and what we have to do. It would essentially take up the entire, like, if you did a series of switchbacks to get to where you need to be, it would take up almost that entire corner parcel. Now you can run stairs down there too. And the other way you solve this is by raising up where that is, just figuring out how we do that.
Yeah.
And then we also have to get DNR.
And I was just thinking there'd be more room here to do those switchbacks than there, than there would be here.
Yeah, not without taking out some of the parking, I don't think, because that, the, the land that we own or the town owns back there is less.
Okay.
It's super steep.
Super steep.
It is.
Yeah.
Okay.
In the parking lot, is there a required number of ADA spaces?
It's one space for every twenty-five.
Okay, so we're talking a parking lot. Here on the corner?
No, 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 the whole of the parking lot.
Oh, okay, or town, okay.
Or existing lot.
And I think that figuring some of this out too would be important in the conversations with Redbird. Because when you figure out how much, I mean, that's the only reason we went to look at this, like, if, when they go to develop this, the town's going to need to keep a certain amount of land for the Riverwalk. We want to be able to know whether that's ten feet or twenty feet, right? It makes a difference when you're offering it. So we're just going to do some quick analysis to make it more concrete. But other than that, this is essentially ready to go. We think the more information you can provide to somebody, the better, and the better response you'll get. But it's a matter of then billions and dates about when it's released and everything like that. We think we will have a pretty good idea probably within a couple of weeks.
Okay.
So the reason I was thinking higher on the Riverwalk, and I mean, it's I like your concept too, being closer to the river. But if the, if the developer of the yellow spot says, I want to have a rear access to my business, so the Redbird says a rear access to the business. Then they can create a landing and they connect, we can go at the same level from parking lot all the way across to the pedestrian bridge, same level. We'd have lower access to the river. But that Riverwalk, it avoids all the ADA things, provides an overlook of the river and access to the rear as well as the business as well. What I was thinking, that avoids all the ADA problems. And the red, and it works for the Redbird as well, said allows them outdoor seating areas and access to their, to their business.
Yeah, I do think whoever develops this before you go and like, like negotiate with Redbird for that land, it's going to be important for that to be cross-accesses easily. Because I'm pretty confident they're going to need to access on the far east side, circle through to the parking lot. So I think whoever buys this is going to develop it with the drive that goes behind and connects back to the parking lot. One for ease of customer, but two for deliveries or anything else that might come up.
There's not a lot of room in there.
So I just back here.
Yeah, so like the land that's behind the Redbird right now is probably, like, I don't know the status of you guys.
That's kind of a new idea, I hadn't thought about access for the river.
I'm pretty sure that like, especially if you want to go for a restaurant, so restaurants are going to need to have one ADA parking and two access for deliveries, and you don't want them to stop right here on the road. So they most likely would come in here, circle through the back parking area of the Redbird and then join into this parking lot, which would give them per, perfect circulation with what you already have as a one-way stripe. And then there, so it could be like a write-in kind of access there to kind of circulate. But whatever you go there is going to want to have some kind of pull-off, drop-off for deliveries trash pickup and some other kind of things.
Do it in the street.
The bar and the restaurant.
You know, tearing up the road next year, you can just revamp it.
This may be a stupid question. And it is stupid, because I talked to Mike about last meeting. Did I miss a meeting? That they're not going to, the county's not going to do our bridge in anymore?
Correct.
What meeting was that? Because I've missed this entire thing. And now that we're talking about Riverwalk, I mean, we talked about that a long time ago, but you guys must have talked about it at the same time that we found out that the county was not going to expand the river or the bridge. I kind of missed a meeting. Where was I? I, I don't remember anything about that at all. Do you know when that, we discussed that? When, do you know when that went into?
I have no idea. I think all along with, it's just, it hasn't been like it's going to happen, but it's, you have to make sure that if it does happen, it's like.
Yeah, I know, but I didn't, I, I thought.
Knows the county's not going to add a lane to the bridge.
Yeah, because we had the whole report over, they could take the use study and everything, they want to put something like six ban in place.
Yeah, and they wanted, they wanted to put a ten-foot walkway. And that's when we said at that one meeting, we don't need a thing over.
Greg is re, is, is referring to a second report where the county says, no, they're not going to do that.
Was it just in an email or it couldn't have been during a meeting, because I haven't missed.
We had it during a meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, they're not.
I don't remember that.
Remember hearing it, and I can't remember saying it, so.
We, we talked about the county not doing the bridge, because they're looking at something between here. Yeah.
Which I don't know where they'd access that, but that's the county's problem. No, I, that's why, when you guys started talking about this, you know, the, the Riverwalk, we had delayed that years ago.
So the river, so the Riverwalk that we talked about a couple of years ago, or a year or so ago, that's not going to happen.
Right.
But because the residents over here don't want it, the residents over here supposedly don't want it.
Right.
Because they use their property too much.
Yeah.
Which they don't. You go down the river, nobody's using your property over here, over here maybe. But the, the Riverwalk would just go from this point over to
Right.
The parking lot by the Redbird.
And how big is this area here? Why?
About seventy foot wide.
Okay, so is some of this going into, with this?
No.
No.
Just the yellow, just the yellow.
So we're going to still leave that seventy foot, the way we planned it.
Yeah.
Original.
For the pedestrian.
Okay, I don't, I, I'm going to.
We assumed we were going all the way to the street, with that across the street, so we're just going based on the United report. So that's good information for us to have as we're starting to look at, what this might look like. Is that, that is different than, than though, than it's a different shape configuration of that.
So you're planning on a parking lot in that seventy foot area?
No.
Good. I mean, it's a crazy place to put a parking lot.
I'll be honest, I think it's a challenge if we want to look at a driveway through here. Because this is.
That's an alley, there's an alley there.
This is the old Camille's. Or the old.
That is an alley over there, that double black.
Yeah, over here, that.
That only goes up just so far, yeah.
Yeah, but that's not even the word talking about.
Yeah.
Well, if you, if that wasn't the access point, they're still going to need to be able to get behind Redbird.
Yeah.
Which they can do through here.
But it depends on what, what happens with that access lane behind the Redbird when you guys, once you take ownership and decide to do disbursement. Like, that's going to need to be able to stay open. Like, when you talk about the Redbird doing outdoor patio stuff, my centers go up and say, you've got to be careful because you're still going to have to get trash trucks through there, you're still going to have to get swashbuckler there. You're probably going to have some kind of access for fire suppression to the back of the building. There, I just know that having done a lot of development sites, they're going to most likely request a drive. Now, whether or not you let them do that is another thing, but they're going to need to figure out can you get parking deliveries, and, and it'll depend on the business too, right? If somebody comes in here with all residential, that's not the same kind of demand as somebody wants to do a restaurant with a banquet hall. You know, if you have a, somebody that's doing deliveries for, you know, you have a meeting room and they're dropping off catering or they're dropping off, you know, the decor or whatever, the sound systems, whatever happens with that is different. So it depends on who goes in here and what their demands will be, because, you know, you can work with them as they get to that point.
Well, if you want to get totally crazy, we could move the pedestrian bridge from that spot over to the parking lot connection. And then we've got some additional seventy feet to deal with, to shift and create some sort of a delivery access.
Wasn't there an issue with that?
Too close to the intersection.
What's that?
The delivery can't be that close to the intersection, so it's going to have to be as far as you still.
Not be from the parking.
Oh, you're saying an access point can't be.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Wasn't there some study that DNR wanted it closer, the pylons to land up closer?
If, if we go with that trend, like you're talking moving this all this way towards the bridge.
Could.
And then that gives you more access for your roadway over here than if we put the pedestrian bridge from the parking lot over.
Yeah, and again, some of that maybe, once, once you get some response and general conversations that have with us. Maybe I say, hey, why can't we use this too? I see the town owns it. Then you can start having a conversation about that. We can put in here that, like, this, the site geometry is flexible depending on the, the.
Proposed use.
The proposed user land.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I think most people assume that they're going to start with one, because what will happen is, once you get some responses, then the committee will have to review it, and then that's when you really get into negotiations with developer about what the building looks like, what kind of material we have, minimum investment, access, you know, all those demands kind of come out in that.
Mike, concerned with the road, you know, this, going this way beside the Redbird is, let's say, you've got to have room for a semi, right, for food deliveries.
Yeah, I mean, you want to have probably a twenty foot, a twenty foot wide drive is big enough for a fire truck. So a twenty foot wide drive would be big enough for deliveries.
A good, a good example would be if you look at the post office fire, uh, parking lot. Because they come, the semis come in, they turn and they back up to the back load, and then they're able to turn, you know, come square out.
And that's possible here too, through the parking lot, but then again, the town's going to need to retain that area, or at least an easement behind the Redbird, so then a truck can back up and unload, or a trash truck can get back there and stuff like that.
Okay.
But if the Redbird decides they want to put patio seating back there, was that due to that?
That, that's why I said, like, that's all part of this land that I think that's under negotiation. So once you take it, before you dispose of it, before you decide what to do with it, that needs to be figured out. Because once there's, it's hard to get that easement back.
Yeah, okay.
So we got a legal description of the part that's not that yellow, do we throw that in? You said we can, I'll offer that as an option, do we just toss that into the RFP and say that's, might be available for a site design proposal?
The parcel to the far west.
Yeah.
I mean, you can, like, we, we could say optional. Like.
Because we can move the pedestrian bridge, I mean, there's the little thing with DNR, right, we can solve that. And it just adds a few million to the pedestrian bridge.
The thing.
We don't have it funded any, like, it's.
If we, if, if we do add part of that lot on the fight bridge, we would still need to maintain, I would personally like to maintain twenty or thirty feet at least as vacant. Because you know darn well, the county's going to go, come in and want to straighten this road out eventually. And if we've already got something put up there, well, how's that going to work?
They're not going to straighten, they're not going to tear down new development to restraighten it.
You know the county.
Those are all kind of things that like, as you get the developer who's interested in it, those are the kind of things you can work out. Site design can be a little bit tricky, and sometimes when they come in with a proposal, they come in with like this big bulldozer type of pressure, when they're thinking about everything, and then that's where like we can help with some of the intricacies and trying to figure out. But I always laugh, but, because I've been doing this for a while, I'm like, somebody will come to me with like a layout, and I'm like, okay, where are you putting your dumpster? Oh, we didn't think about the dumpster. Okay, well, those little details make a difference when you're trying to lease. So we'll continue to work with the, the town as that process goes through.
Okay.
Uh, I was just looking, I need to double check, I think that third parcel I'm showing on there is not yours. I think this one might be owned by the Redbird.
Uh, that's correct.
So I need to adjust the drawing on that as well.
This one right here?
Yeah.
And we.
Zoom in, it looks a lot different than on the Stewie's paper.
We own part of number thirty-one, right?
You own all of thirty-one, or potentially own, that's what it does.
Yeah, that's that.
Yeah, the, well.
All of thirty-one is the AEPs, wait, which thirty-one?
You mean, two oh seven, two two nine there.
This one?
This one.
That's all part of was labeled as AEP right now.
Yeah.
That's all one parcel, it starts here, goes all the way across, gets real there, right there, but then keeps going. So technically, there is a chunk of land that's in between these people and their access to the river.
Yeah.
Okay.
In addition to the other little strip that's a little bit further.
This one right here.
Yeah.
That's.
That's all part of the AEP lot also.
Yeah.
And that seems like a good cue for us to talk about AEP.
There was one on the, under additional considerations, one, there's one village in place of town, need to be swapped.
Oh, okay. Wait, where are we at?
Evaluation criteria under additional considerations.
What, what'd you see, what'd you see there, Greg?
On the second bullet point is the second bullet point you would have town and.
Oh, village, oh.
Yeah.
Must take out from Michigan RFP.
You know, Ken gave it to me, so who knows?
I think, I think Mike, it's a good idea, let's throw that corner, seventy feet in there too.
Our priorities, get that lot developed.
Yeah.
We can always adjust the bridge if we ever get money.
Right, let's, let's, let's get this out, let's get some interest parties, and then let's figure out what they want to do, where we're going to go with it, then the.
Yeah, I mean, the bigger the lot, the better response you're going to get, right?
Right.
And then you can figure it out when they're, there's also an advantage kind of having a building that has a corner a little bit, making it feel more like an edge.
Yeah.
I have a question. What is the, you probably don't know this, the distance where it says project site up here, which is, say, river edge to the park, do you know the distance that compared to the distance from, say, down behind the Redbird?
Oh, like how far, how far would the bridge have to be?
Yeah, how, how wide the river is through there.
I can take a look at it, oh, that's in the United report, so I can give you some information on that.
Yeah.
It's about the same.
I think it's about the same.
I think it is too.
I think the banks are almost parallel in this particular section.
Yeah.
It's.
So.
I think it is as far as the Redbird goes, and then the park curves.
Yeah, I'm also in my head now, running backwards, and you have the overlook on the other side of the river and seeing where those two line up. So there might be some advantage having those closer together too. So we'll definitely take a look at that, we'll take a step back and kind of figure out, um, you know, a realistic kind of thing. And then again, these are just things that we have to kind of understand before proposals come in, because those are the questions you're going to probably ask. And some of what they propose may shape some of that decision.
Yeah. Okay. Alex.
Well, it, no, no, no.
What'd you figure out?
Well, so here's what we're looking at. But what we're doing right now is evaluating the deeds for the, I'm forgetting which name this gave me here, Lamb Rights, and then for the Redbirds as far as whether or not they're going to have a title interest that interferes with the town's efforts to acquire this property. Interferes with the town's, um, efforts to acquire this property, the AEP parcel we'll call it. So we have a legal description from United, that's a huge step in the right direction. Our next, the next step, um, I, I think based upon the. The town's authority to condemn and the RDC's authority to condemn. There's some nuances between the two. Um, but since this, this parcel here is only like twenty-three acres, three and a half acres. Sorry, not even that. Uh, yeah, point three seven acres. It's got an ass, uh, an assessed value of like three thousand dollars. The town, um, based upon its statutory authority to condemn. Has some ability to just make an offer to purchase property if the value is less than twenty-five thousand dollars. I think that's reasonable here. Um, the reason I think that is important is. What the town's gonna have to do is make some semblance of an offer to AEP as part of the condemnation process. Since AEP is. Based on the auditor's records, who we think has the strongest title interest in this parcel. Now again, the effort here is to make sure there's no surprise. So once we've identified whether or not the Redbird has a property interest. That GIS doesn't reflect here, that the Lambry is done with the property interest that GIS reflects here. That's gonna be part of the discussion with them as far as how we. Um, navigate easement issues, access issues and landlord's expectation. Once condemnation begins. The goal here is, again, this is essentially. Essentially a quiet title action, the name of the town, for the benefit of the town. To figure out who the hell owns that parcel, right? But that can't come as a surprise to these landlords, uh, because if it does, now you've had a conflict and again, as we move into litigation. There's always going to be uncertainty. And so we can come at this with the, the best laid plan. Uh, and try to eliminate as many of those variables as we can at the onset. But there could be something in the works, something that gets thrown into the mix that complicates that process. So. The, I think what the council will need to do, um, is, and I don't think it's prepared to do it tonight. Maybe as early as Thursday, maybe as early, as late as the, uh, first meeting in October. Would be to authorize the, the uniform acquisition letter to AEP. To begin the condemnation process. Again, we essentially wanna do this with consent. That's, that's, that's the, the objective here. Um, what we need is for, for AEP to, to understand what council's objective is, town's objective is. I think it's, I don't think that it's something that she done. I don't think AEP is willing to just sell the parcel like that's been their gripe all along, so they don't have titles, they won't convey it. Um, so we're gonna have to proceed into court to get an order in court that the town owns it. We want that to happen. Um, but we also wanna make sure that once. The town gets the order for the taking, that AEP doesn't say, well, this is actually a hundred thousand dollar parcel. So we want a hundred thousand dollars and we want three appraisers. We, we really, we wanna do this with as much consent of the parties involved as we can. Um, that will expedite the process. Um, it'll minimize costs and it will effectuate the solution that we're seeking. So that's kind of the steps. That's, that's where things, that's where things stand. So it's, it's moving, it's not a quick process. But, uh, and again, conscious of the fact that we don't want this to be an overly expensive process to the town. Those are the steps that I propose we take. To, uh, to effectuate this solution.
I guess I don't understand how AEP owns that property to begin with, when we've never had AEP here.
Well, I am, they have AEP by another name. But, um, they've been here since they've, I mean, they own the. They've owned that riverbank parcel, that, that real thin strip there since the thirties. Um, through an acquisition of.
So they may have owned it when the dam was there.
I think they purchased, uh, yes, yes, I think that's right. I think that's right. Um, so they've been here.
Looking at me like, yes, yes, there used to be a dam there.
They've been here, uh.
I didn't know that.
To hear them, to hear them tell it, uh, they have no interest in being on the east side of Division Street. That's their, that's their position.
Alex, is there some benefit to holding off on releasing anything on the RFP until after that value is settled? And that there may be some perception of this support more as a development site?
I, I mean, not, not necessarily. I mean, I think it's. It, one, I mean, you may, you may have more interactions with developers i- in this context than I would in a given day, but. Um, part of this is gonna require some imagination to develop this.
Absolutely.
So, um, everybody has an imagination for it right now, the town included. And I think the acquisition of this parcel, clearing the title of this parcel is part of that imagination process. So I, I don't, I don't think that there's, uh, there's nothing. Illegal or irresponsible or, um, in violation of statute to issue the RFP that says. Here's aspirationally what we want. Who's interested in dreaming about this with us? Um, to see if there's any.
I was only going value wise, like if AEP would suddenly be like, oh, this is more valuable, it's worth a hundred thousand dollars. Have a developer who wants to go there. That was my only thought.
We should have a quick response from AEP.
I would think so, and, and I also, um, I mean, if it really came down to it, if it really came down to it. Um, and that was the argument, that you've now got a developer on the hook and so now this, this parcel is, uh, more valuable. I think there's a statutory procedure that would tell you that it's not. And I think you'd get. Your four, or three appraisers would come in and I don't, I don't think they would evaluate it based upon what a developer had in mind for it or that the town had issued an RFP. They, they look at the, the value of the parcel and say, here's what it is. Now it would be, in that scenario, the town's probably in the position to have to pay more. For that parcel to resolve that type of dispute than if they were to do it by agreement.
But again, it's also assuming that AEP.
Uh, that's, that's correct. And at least our understanding, um, from our conversations with them is they're, they understand. Understand the town's intention, they understand the town's desire. They haven't said absolutely, absolutely sue us, we'll stand down. They hadn't said that. Um, but I, I think the, the hope is that this is mutually beneficial for, for everybody involved. For us to go through this process by agreement. Um, and so that's, that's at least our, our hope and expectation. I think we'll know, um, I'll get on the horn with, uh, with Steve here in the next. Week or so, and if it's, if his understanding is any different, then we can make that report to the council. But, um, I do think though that the, I, I think the town is the appropriate entity to proceed. Um, instead of the RDC and once title is acquired. It was kind of, there's a little bit of patchwork of, of who owns what in this development. I think we'll use the same procedure that we use with, with Rayburn. To convey it all to the RDC so that this RFP process is.
Okay.
So that's the, that's the thought, that's the hope. It's admittedly. Not a lot of templates for this particular. And, and not a lot of, uh, straightforward.
Check with Rocket Law just to see.
Like those.
Yeah, uh, there is no Rocket Lawyer form for this one.
He's gonna try and prove you wrong.
Next is the, uh, update on the development.
So since we met last, I have had multiple conversations with May and Jason and the county. Um, and have sat down with them to kind of review this. Some issues have been resolved and some issues are in Alex's inbox to have him respond to because their. Feelings and our feelings might be a little bit different. Um, there hasn't been a dramatic change or anything to the content of this, the public meetings we had. Um, here or people were invited to come. We did a, um. Direct invitation to all the businesses within that corridor. And then we did have somebody from Thorcom and a couple other people, and then we had a general community meeting as well. Um, so we did have that at the request of the county and that went really well. Uh, the couple sticking points, um, from the county planning staff's perspective. Um, they don't have fence permits, they don't want to have fence permits, they don't want to have anything to do with fences. Um, and so they have asked that if we included, the town be responsible for any fence permits. Um, so I would envision that operating similar to what you guys currently have set up for your signage, which is that would go for the town clerk. Um, so that is the one item. The other item is sort of that temporary signs. Again, they have no regulations for temporary signs. They don't want to have any regulations. They don't want to have to review any of it. They think if any, either of those issues come to the county, that the county commissioners will probably give us a hard time about including them in these. So their recommendation is that the town is to handle it, and the town's willing to handle it, then you can put it in there and the town handle it, we can stay out of it. So, um, we've kind of changed the language to do that. Um, similarly, they had some issues with the lighting regulations. Uh, they feel like since they just adopted new lighting regulations, that that should be good enough. I can tell you from looking at them, that is not good enough. Um, and so the, the compromise that I talked to them about is we put a line in there that the lighting would be reviewed by the town engineer. Because again, they don't wanna have to look at the standards and understand and know those standards. So those were some of our biggest sticking points. They're still looking into the prohibition of those couple uses. I don't think there's any legal standing that would cause a problem with those being in there, because it's not prohibited everywhere in the town, including the border. And just a reminder, those tattoo parlors and tobacco shops, um, nothing crazy. Um, the other item where there's still some discussion is about non-conformances. So the. County ordinance is very generous and how you get rid of illegal non-conforming use. So if somebody had illegal non-conforming signs, so they had a two hundred square foot sign. And they took off the cabinet and put back, you know, it's a rectangle now and they put up a two hundred square foot circle. They're like, okay, that's fine. Like, they wouldn't make them do anything along the lines of bringing it into conformance. Um, same with, we wrote some stuff in there for the fence that I think will help with the, the fence section itself. But they aren't a huge, their legal review isn't favorable of us having our own non-conforming standards. Um, I don't see any reason why we can't. I think it's beneficial to the town to have some slightly stricter standards. If they're just gonna be like, oh, you changed it an inch, it's fine. You're never gonna see any improvement. And as we talked about before, these standards only apply to new construction or reconstruction. So. Um, I found out a lot of interesting things in these meetings, like they don't even pay attention to parking. So they, they didn't really care that we had a bit in here. Um, so it's just some, some intricacies. The, the other really hard part still has to do with how they time. The annexations and rezonings. So there's some, the whole part about having agricultural land coming into the town. This is probably the only jurisdiction I know of. There might be some other in southern Indiana, but. I haven't worked in a jurisdiction before where the annexation and rezoning didn't run concurrent. Um, that would solve a whole lot of problems. And I still think there might be some, but getting the towns together to kind of approach that. They weren't opposed to that idea, but they would probably wanna see one in one town come forward with that. To kind of change the process for all the towns. Again, it makes the most amount of sense. There's no sense in having the counties own it. If you're gonna annex it. And if you wanna annex it and want it to be something else, that's your time to kind of handle that. You can't say, well, you have a year to rezonate because you can't like disannex them just because they didn't come through and rezonate. So that whole process is probably the most complicated part of this. So it's mostly your statement of we don't want to see that. And then town will have to figure out how that. We worked out a lot of the other details and a lot of it was arguing over which word to use and how. So Jason and I went back and forth a lot. I'm like, well, what if we said it this way? And I wanted to be clear there. I don't want it to say. Chapter, I wanted to say session. Just silly things like that, so.
So glad you were in those meetings.
There was a lot of, yeah, um, some shock by them that. Why would the town want to be stricter from the county? And I just kind of let that go.
Why wouldn't we? Why wouldn't we?
Every town I've encountered wants to be differently. County Seamer doesn't work in a town. So, um, I think we've come a long way. It's to your team now to give another legal review over and see if there's anything else we missed. Um, and then let me know, but please read through it and let me know if there's anything else that jumps out. Um, there weren't major changes. We did do a couple things like, they wouldn't let us put anything in here about sidewalks. So Ken's recommendation is we'll add up the construction standards then. So still require sidewalks, we'll just put it in construction standards instead of zoning ordinance and then that gets them out of that. So there's been a lot of figuring out how to include things that they don't wanna include it.
And my instructions is, has been, direction has been, let's get this done. Even if we have to give some things now, let's get this done and on the books. Because they are updating every year. So you can go back and do single issue things every year. This Thursday, we're adopting their update for this year. So they are going to do things, but, um, we need to get this in place. So argue your best and some issues on this way, say, okay, move forward.
Right, so if it ultimately comes out that we take out the sign up in for these differences, we'll take it out and we'll revisit it in a year. Like, it's just making sure that we can get it to that point. I just wanted to get your town attorney's opinion on it before I just, I don't think, say, I take it out. It's also easier for me to attend those meetings. My, no offense, but they know they can't pull stuff over on me. Cause I, I know the.
He's got a Rocket Law account.
This is, I was related, but not exactly. Um, I'm gonna send Mike some information. The Indiana chapter of the American Planning Association is holding their conference in South Bend in October. Um, one of the state renowned trainers for planning permission for zoning appeals and, uh, councils. Is gonna be at, um, in South Bend doing a, a one-off training. Um, so also then information to you, it's a fantastic training that goes through the intricacies of likely abuse law. And why there's certain things you can do and some things you can't do. Um, so I'll pass that information on. There might also be some sessions within the conference itself that you guys may be interested in. So I'll, I'll share that with everybody and then you guys can take a look.
Thank you.
I'll let them know I would send those to our town partners, so.
Thank you.
Any questions on this before I?
Okay. Anything else?
That's, that's it. I have a project update, but I'll show that Thursday night.
Okay.
Time for exact instructions.
Oh, I'm, I'm making motion only adjourn.